Welcome everyone to the Oakville-Halton Town Hall to protect our public hospitals and to fight privatization of our hospital services. Thank you so much for taking the time to, from your busy day to spend the time with us tonight, and I really appreciate it. I'm Helen Lee. I'm the Chair of the Halton Health Coalition. And we'd like to open our session with a land acknowledgement by Pat Borrio. Pat, over to you. Pat, you're on mute.
So. We will begin this event by acknowledging that we are meeting on Aboriginal land that has been inhabited by Indigenous peoples from the beginning. We are speaking with you from the traditional territory of the Anasunabi here on Windack, Handanoshomi, Chipewa, O-Chipewa, Chipewa people. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet here. And we thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us. As settlers, this recognition of the contributions and the historic importance of Indigenous peoples must be put into action through our continuous collective commitment to make the recommendations of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission real in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you so much. And I'd like to just add that as a first generation Canadian-born Chinese, I just want to thank the Indigenous people for the support and the shelter that they provided the early Chinese workers when they came to Canada. It's very, very important to me. And the next part of the session is just to go over the logistical details of what we're going to cover tonight. We have a chat box open and we invite you to put in your questions. The chat messages will go to the participants, like all participants, or just to the host, I believe, Selah, right? Is that true? Okay, great. Joanne Thompson, she's another member of our coalition. She's going to be helping me just monitor the chat so that we don't miss any of your questions. We will save the chat and we'll also have the recording so that tomorrow we can send everyone that participated in the session, the recording, and so you can kind of go over that if you want at your leisure, the information that was provided. We have two amazing speakers tonight. Alimira from the Ontario Health Coalition and Erin Eris from the Ontario Nurses Association. After the speakers, we will open up the floor to questions and ideas from, from the group. So we're really anxious to hear these. You can use your raise, your hand function, and it's at the bottom of your screen under reactions to indicate that you have a question. And then we'll call on you to, to, to ask your questions, okay? And then Mervyn will say a few parting words for us at the end of the session. Before we introduce our speakers, I just wanted to share with you why I'm here, how I got involved. I worked in the Ontario Public Service for over thirty years. I did human resource work. I did labor relations work and negotiations. And then at the end, I did change management, huge business reengineering projects. And I worked in over those thirty-plus years with all three parties. And even longer time, I've been doing community advocacy work. But I had to retire to keep my grandmother company when she entered long-term care. And that was at the age of one hundred and seven. She was a social activist when she was seventy, so it's never too late to become a social activist. And she was really my role model. Sadly, you know, she died in wave one of the pandemic at the age of one hundred and eleven. And I was pleading for help from the government, help for the nursing homes. The for-profit model does not work. It doesn't work in long-term care. It costs thousands of lives, you know, four thousand five hundred lives, deaths. And we're still not seeing any positive effects out of that. And I'm horrified to see that it's being extended to our hospital services. So I think this is a systematic destruction of our public healthcare. It's a nudging of people towards private for-profit healthcare using public dollars just to begin. Ford was cutting public services before the pandemic. That's why Ontario was so slow in the pandemic response and did not have a pandemic plan. And then even during the pandemic, when there was opportunity to develop staffing plans, retention plans, the government didn't do that. They chose not to do that. And so now we're here today. We have a Halton Health Coalition, and it was founded because of earlier town halls that we had last year and awareness campaigns that, that we rolled out to warn Ontarians about the premier for its privatization agenda going into the election. So we are a small but dedicated group, and we're looking for more supporters. We're looking for more defenders of public healthcare. So that's a little bit background about me and how I got involved in this. And I am so happy that you're here tonight, interested as well. So the first speaker that we have is Erin Eris. Is Erin there? She is the Vice President of Region Four, which includes our Halton area. And she has nineteen years of clinical experience as a registered nurse. And she can give us more insights in terms of what's happening locally. Do you see Erin? Selah?
Uh, she's not on yet.
Not yet?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, shall we? Shall we move to Natalie? Is Natalie on yet?
She's just joining now. Uh, I think she's.
Erin?
Nat- Natalie's just joined now.
Okay, good. And shall we proceed first with Natalie then?
Hi, sorry, my signal seems to be iffy. I'm all set.
Oh, or is this an, oh, this might be a good time for us to just talk about the protest tomorrow. Do you want to take a few minutes to talk about that with Judy? And then see if Erin meets us, or what would you prefer, Natalie?
And then I'm here, I'm just, I'll be ready whenever you're ready.
I didn't actually hear what you said. It was.
Yeah, it was enough, but she said we're good to proceed with Judy.
Okay, Judy, you're on.
Okay. I've got my poster ready.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening, and thanks, Helen, for sharing your story about why you're here. I'm here for similar reasons in that I'm concerned about corporatization within the healthcare system. It's actually not responsible. It's not a good way. We're going to be paying for it through our tax dollars. And we're going to be paying for that portion that is profit. So they're putting dollars before people. So we don't want to see that, and so that's part of the reason why I'm advocating here tonight. In the chat, I'm going to post some details around a protest that's going to be occurring tomorrow here in Oakville at the there, I think it's all there now. At the Oakville-Trefalgar Hospital, so Halton Healthcare, Oakville-Trefalgar Hospital, the new location up at Trefalgar and, pardon me, at Third Line and Dundas. So we're very fortunate here in Oakville to have access to a great newer facility. It opened in 2015, but there were a lot of community activities that went into building that hospital up on its old site in terms of equipment and all that. That's all done through a ton of fundraising that we do here in the community to help make that hospital work. And so tomorrow, the Ontario Nursing Association is hosting a rally, a picket around the hospital, and there's details in the chat, so I hope you can join them. There will be other allies from the teachers' unions as well as other people from the Oakville District Labor Council. So I'm here on behalf of the Oakville District Labor Council, as well as my direct involvement here locally with the Ontario Health Coalition, Oakville-Halton Chapter. So there's details about where you can park, because it's too expensive to park at the hospital. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you so much. Just looking to see if Erin came yet, and if not, we'll go to Natalie. Okay, it looks like Natalie is on, so I'm just going to introduce Natalie. Actually, she, she doesn't really require an introduction. She's the Executive Director of Ontario Health Coalition. But she's been fighting, protecting our public healthcare for over twenty-six years. She's a fierce advocate. Her commitment is unmatched, unmatched. Stories of her driving through the storm to attend meetings, personally delivering lawn signs across the province. And then today she was at a demonstration in the snowstorm, right? But what impresses me the most about Natalie is her continued kindness and her enthusiasm and her energy. So Natalie, the floor is yours.
Uh-huh. You know, Helen, we love you, all, all of us at the Health Coalition. And it's really an honor and a privilege. You know, one of the best things about this work is that I really truly get to meet the most amazing people, and it really is the honor of a lifetime to be able to work to protect public Medicare for, for everyone. I mean, what, what a chance in life that is. I remember many, many years ago, when I first started at the Health Coalition, I came across a book, and it was called Life Before Medicare. And it was put together by the Ontario Coalition of Senior Citizens Organizations. And actually, I looked online, if anyone's interested, it's, you can buy it online, even from Amazon. Although I'm not, I'm not suggesting people should shop from Amazon, but nonetheless, you can actually find this book, and it's, so it's called Life Before Medicare. And so it was a coalition of seniors groups in Ontario who asked seniors across the province to tell their stories about what life was like before public Medicare, because they were worried people would forget. And by the way, if I start to break up and you can't make out what I'm saying, will someone tell me? Or just make it very obvious, and I'll actually switch to coming in through my cellphone. Sorry about this. I just, I was at this protest, and there was no way, there's a massive snowstorm here. There was no way I was going to be able to make it home in time to do this Zoom. So I had to book a hotel room. I'm doing it from the hotel room, and it just seems to be iffy internet. So I apologize. I was going to do it from the car, but it really is truly grotesque outside. So I thought, oh, that's just going to be too weird. Anyway. So one of the stories in this book just always stuck with me, and it was the story, I think it was written by the daughter, if I recall correctly. And it's about her mom, and her mom was a, they were a farming family in Saskatchewan, and her mom was dying of cancer. And she didn't want to bankrupt the family. And so she told them not to seek medical care for her as she was dying. And the daughter writes about be hearing her mom screaming, locked in the house and screaming in pain as she was dying from cancer, having told her family not to seek medical treatment for her because she didn't want to leave them in financial ruin when she died. And you know, it just breaks your heart, right, the suffering that happened before public Medicare, although we do have it in some ways, in the, in the parts of the system that are covered for people, you know, seeking to try and pay for drugs for cancer treatment and things like that. We see that kind of suffering still in our society, but a lot of it has been abated because we have single-tier public Medicare. And so Canadians take it for granted, and we have no idea how much healthcare really costs. And it's one of the big problems when governments, like the Ford government, come in and they start to privatize because people don't really understand the threat. But the bottom line is, when we won public Medicare in Canada, what we won was the Canada Health Act, ultimately, over, you know, there were years of different types of legislation and machinations and so on. But ultimately, nineteen eighty-four, the Canada Health Act is passed, and the act says it forbids extra billing of patients. You cannot charge a patient for a cataract surgery or for any kind of medically needed diagnostic test for a hip or a knee surgery for any hospital or physician service. And rightfully, the act is criticized for limiting it to hospital and physician services. But nonetheless, you cannot extra bill a patient. You can't charge user fees for that. You can't detach a medically unnecessary test to getting the medically necessary procedure in order to extra bill a patient, right? You're not allowed to do any of that, but routinely in Canada, the private clinics do it. In fact, we called, I wish, Selah, I don't know if you have time, I just, I can't do two things on the internet with this signal, it's too weak. But if you can just Google or search Global Mail, private clinics, double billing, and put the article that comes up in the chat. Thank you, honey. So twice, we called every private clinic in Canada. The first kind of seminal report on the private clinics we did in, it was from two thousand and six to two thousand and eight. And we phoned every private clinic in Canada, and we caught the vast majority of them double billing patients. We would say, I'm a patient, I want an MRI, how much is it going to cost? How many doctors you have? We're trying to get a sense of what their business model was. Turns out their business model was to actually bill O-HIP or provincial equivalent in other provinces, get rid of O-HIP. They don't. They want O-HIP, but they want to be able to bill patients on top as well, because that's how they maximize their profits. And the prices even back then were ludicrous. We did it again. The B.C. Health Coalition did it with all of the private clinics in B.C., and again, they got the same results. We did it twice in the intervening years, all the private clinics in Ontario. Again, we found the same thing. And then in twenty seventeen, eighteen, we called again all the private clinics across the country. This time, we were working with the Global Mail newspaper, and so they used our database. We, we transcribed the majority of the private clinics' extra billing patients. So when Doug Ford says, stands there and says, you'll only ever use your O-HIP card, you won't use your credit card. It's an utter lie. The private clinics in Ontario already currently extra bill patients routinely, and they upsell all kinds of medically unnecessary junk to people and manipulate them into buying it. But nonetheless, we phoned every private clinic in the country, and we caught the majority of them extra billing patients and charging ludicrous fees, and the fees have gone up. So, and they've gone up again. So today, what we're hearing from patients in the private for-profit clinics is that they are being charged in your area, Oakville area, three thousand dollars, two thousand dollars per eye for medically needed cataract surgery. Sometimes they'll tell you things like, you tell if that's a lie or not, because how would you know? Or you can clinic in a few weeks, but you have a seventeen or two thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars completely illegal. That is illegal. It is in practice in your area, but it is not allowed. It's illegal under the Canada Health Act, and it's illegal under Ontario legislation, the Commitment to the Future of Medicare Act. In the private clinics, they're charging routinely now starting costs for an MRI, a thousand dollars. With contrast, it's more than that in Niagara. I think it was Niagara, one of our supporters just recently got charged two, two thousand dollars for contrast for an MRI. Again, completely illegal. Add in body parts, it's more than that. For hip or shoulder surgery, ten times the cost, literally ten times the cost of what it costs under O-HIP. I should say, to be clear, so cataract surgery, they're charging routinely two thousand twenty-five hundred dollars per eye for the surgery in the private clinics. That surgery costs five hundred and fifty dollars approximately under O-HIP. Like, it's a quarter of the cost. You know, it's really shocking. The prices are shocking. I recently spoke with a farmer in Saskatchewan. He was told he'd have an impossible way to get a hip surgery. Again, who knows if this is the truth? Because these are, you know, private clinic owners referring to their own private clinics. Or he could get it in a private clinic, but it would cost him fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars for a day surgery, hip surgery. These are completely ludicrous prices. That's about a thousand times the cost in the public health system. So even if people have the money, you know, upper-middle income people think, well, I've got the money to pay for an MRI here or a hip or knee surgery there. What they don't realize is, one, that the costs just keep escalating. And two, that, in fact, why would anyone be paying ten times, five times, a thousand times the reasonable cost for a service and drive up the cost for everyone forevermore? I mean, it just makes no sense. That is why the American health system in part is so crazily expensive. And why we just don't want to go down that road here. I wanted to tell you because people don't realize how much private healthcare costs. And they don't realize what the Canada Health Act actually does and what it protects us from. As Justice Emmett Hall, who was a conservative judge, actually appointed by Deif and Baker, said when he recommended the Canada Health Act to Canadians. He said Canadians have decided that we would pool our income and that we would pool our resources and provide healthcare to everyone through our taxes ahead of time, so that we were not hit with a financial burden and financial ruin when we were sick, when we're elderly, when we're dying, and least able to pay. That is the fundamental principle of public Medicare, and it's worth preserving. You know, Mike Harris, you may recall, came and he privatized home care. It's been a disaster ever since. Then they privatized long-term care. And we all saw what happened in the pandemic, you know, where people suffered so horribly and egregiously, even while the companies literally took millions of dollars of profit every single month of the pandemic, while their residents died even of dehydration, starvation, of just complete lack of medical care, of neglect. I mean, it was, you know, I think for all of us who followed it closely, it's seared in our memories. We will never forget the, 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 just how grotesque the behavior of the industry was. In Canada, now we're seeing the beginnings of investor-owned, like, equity companies moving in to buy up chains of private clinics across the country. We see that with Clearpoint Health and some others. You know, this is, you know, they'll talk, they'll distract into European models that no one knows anything about. Without any question, this is very much the Americanization of our public healthcare system, and we have to stop it. So, you know, Mike Harris privatized home care, long-term care, we have the lessons from that. And now Doug Ford is coming for the public hospitals. This is what they announced. They announced in their word that they're going to move forward with plans to, quote, significantly expand the privatization of surgeries and diagnostics to for-profit hospitals and clinics. They'll bring in new legislation, which they introduced yesterday, to facilitate the plan, which is already underway. They've already called for bids for three new private day hospitals to do fourteen thousand cataract surgeries initially, as well as diagnostics. They're giving eighteen million in new funding on top of an earlier expansion, two earlier expansions of funding to expand the existing private clinics to cover care for, quote, there were thousands of patients. The announcement included more than forty-nine thousand hours of MRI and CT scans, four thousand eight hundred cataract surgeries, nine hundred other ophthalmic surgeries, that's eye surgeries, a thousand gynecological surgeries, two thousand eight hundred and forty-five plastic surgeries, and so on. Then they said that they're expanding the number of private clinics, and they intend to further expand the volume as well as the types of surgeries that they privatize. They plan to have privatized hip and knee surgeries up and running by twenty twenty-four. And when, in the media scrum, Doug Ford was asked what kind of, you know, how much are they going to privatize? He said that the assessment of their government was that fifty percent of the surgeries that are currently done in hospitals are of the easy sort that they feel they're, thus the sort that they could privatize. So there are really three key reasons why we oppose this. One is obviously that the private clinics bring in two-tier Medicare, that they, they increase costs dramatically, that they extra bill patients when they are sick and when they need care in violation of the Canada Health Act. And despite thirty years now of experience, really, the clinic started in the nineteen nineties in a serious way in Canada after the big public budget cuts of the, of nineteen ninety-five. And after all of these years, there is no province who has allowed in significant numbers of private clinics that has been, be able to control their behavior. It just has not happened. So two-tier Medicare driving up costs, the end of public Medicare for all is the chief reason. But there are other reasons. We have the worst staffing crisis we've ever seen in our public hospitals, and really, this government has done a considerable amount to drive the public hospitals into the ground in a way that is pretty shocking, actually. We've had a hundred and fifty-eight emergency department closures from last February to this February in the last year. Unheard of, ten would have been unheard of prior to this. You know, emergency department closures because of lack of staff. And yet the government has not only underspent the healthcare budget, they actually underspent last year's healthcare budget by almost a billion dollars. They underspent every year of the pandemic. They refused to fund the public hospitals. They kept a wage cap on the, on the nurses and the health professionals and so on, even as they were leaving by the thousands after they had all, you know, risked their lives for three years for us. They refused to do anything about the price gouging of the agency, private agency, nursing companies that are predatory and are pulling, are, are actually decimating the staffing in the public hospitals. I mean, really, just anything that they could have done to help resolve the staffing crisis, they really haven't done. They've held a whole bunch of press conferences and really done virtually nothing. And at the same time, it's underfunding the hospitals, and every local hospital in the province practically has operating rooms that are, don't work in the evenings or on weekends or are closed for days or weeks or months or years at a time because of underfunding. You know, at the same time as that's the situation in the public hospitals, they literally doubled the funding for the private clinics in the last quarter of the last financial year, and then, as I said, gave a big bump up in the summer, and then another big, big bump up again in January. It's just the old formula. You know, absolutely create a crisis or, or contribute to the crisis more accurately in the public system, you know, and then say, oh, but there's no solution but to privatize. And that's what we're seeing. So we have, so we have to fight this, because if you allow the private clinics to take more staff out of the public hospitals, to do only the lightest profitable, easy-care surgeries, the high volumes, the fast stuff, leaving behind the patients with COPD and heart arrhythmias and diabetes, who are overweight, who are more at risk of coding on the operating room table and so on, with less staff and less fun to it. What happens is what happened in Australia, where they have a two-tier system. The people waiting in the public system have even longer of a wait than they had before. It actually drives up wait times. It does not bring them down. It redirects resources to people who are buying medically unnecessary stuff away from people in need. It takes staff away from the local public hospitals, funding and resources away from the local public hospitals. And most of our communities like yours have literally spent the last hundred years building their local hospitals, trying to bring services closer to home. And the final reason is because they have poor quality, to the point that they actually have higher death rates. And these are, these are irrefutable facts. I mean, this alone should kill the idea. The meta-analyses, these are studies of literally millions of patients in thousands of hospitals across the United States, the, where they have for-profit hospitals. They have higher death rates in the for-profit hospitals. I think it's, is it eight thousand patients a year, three thousand patients a year? Anyways. Significant numbers of, of, of avoidable deaths because the for-profit Because the for-profit hospitals cut corners on staffing as they do in long-term care. And the same studies repeated in for-profit hemodialysis clinics, so. Private clinics found again significantly higher death rates to the tune of thousands of people each year. That die unnecessarily because why? They push the blood through more quickly, they do less blood cleaning, and they have lesser trained staff. Than do the public and the not-for-profit hemodialysis clinics. That's how they cut corners to make room for profit. I just, um, you know, we are gonna fight this. We're gonna fight this with everything we've got. Because in my view, we will lose single-tier Medicare if we don't stop. The turnover of the ownership and control of our public not-for-profit hospitals to private for-profit clinics. Um, and I think we have a way to stop it. We are gonna call a referendum, you know, because the public has not really had any say over this. We wanna make it incredibly visible. We wanna try and get something like a million votes, you know, a massive vote. A large petition in Ontario. Would be twenty thousand signatures, thirty thousand signatures. You know, no one politically ever gets a million people to do the same thing all at one time. But we have almost a million members alone in the Ontario Health Coalition. I believe we could get a vote of a million people to stop the privatization of our hospitals. That would shake. Any government of any stripe. And to do that, we wanna hold votes on the street. In the end of May, so when the weather is nice, May twenty-sixth, that's a Friday, and the twenty-seventh. Excuse me. The weekend before that is the long weekend, so Monday the twenty-second is the long weekend. So for two weeks leading in, we would ask workplaces to do votes. So industrial workplaces, if you have, for example, you've got an auto. Um, workplace that's unionized, you know, could they do a vote in their workplace? Could the schools do it? Could the hospitals do it, and the long-term care homes and the municipality? Other kind of industrial workplaces that you have. Could the non-unionized workplaces? Do it. Could the not-for-profit agencies and community groups and senior centers and so on do it amongst their staff? Then that would be the last two weeks of, of May. On the twenty-sixth, could we get voting stations outside of? Food stores and corner stores and um. Coffee shops and bookstores and, and the like, where people can go and vote. Um, yes or no to stop um, the privatization of the hospitals. Could we do all? Online voting for the two weeks leading in and possibly put ballots in the local newspaper or. Things like that where people can mail in their ballot or to get the max, the maximum vote. So that's what we're looking at. And we're gonna do it all across Ontario. We've held meetings like this, town by town by town by town. Across Ontario, people by the thousands are signing up to be involved. I think we have six thousand, to somewhere between six and seven thousand. People now signed up to help make this happen across Ontario. And the goal would be to just have this massive vote and make it impossible for the government to move forward with it. The legislature is gonna be sitting till June the first. That's the Thursday of that week. So the idea would be. Hold the street votes Friday and Saturday, make them super visible. So that's the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh of May, and then announce the results the Tuesday. That's the twenty-ninth of May. And then bring as many of the ballots as we can to the legislature, you know. Will be this massive visual showing of Ontarians opposing the privatization of our public hospitals. I have a quick video if it's okay, because we did this in a smaller scale. So this is just three minutes. It's very, very short, but it gives you a picture of what it looks like on the ground. Um, we did, it was a model of hospitals called privatized P-three, public-private partnership hospitals. Without getting into all the details, it's sort of like a half step between, you know, a public hospital and a private hospital. And we were able to, we did, in eight towns, we did these referendums. And we got, I think, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand votes or something like that. Um, and out of that, the government, you know, said to us, what's it gonna take to get you from, you know, red light to yellow light? We know you'll never say green light, but you know, what's it gonna take? And I was like, well, stop the P-three privatization. What they did was actually eliminate the privatization of all the services of the hospitals that were included in the deals, about fifty percent of. The privatization in the deals they rolled back. So it was, it was, you know, quite an accomplishment. We didn't stop it all the way, but we sure. Rolled it back in a way that it has not been done in any other jurisdiction. So um, so it was quite successful. And we also did this again. Um, when uh, the Liberals tried to privatize the surgeries and diagnostics. Uh, and they stopped it as well. So I would like to just, if it's okay, show you the video really quickly and then I'll just. Wrap up with a couple things that we could do. Yeah, referendum votes in doctor's office, great idea. So Sally, can you show the video for us?
Yeah, one second.
Thanks, honey. I'll answer that question in just a second.
This looks very much like an election campaign, except it's not. It's a plebiscite vote that's actually citizen-run, not government-run. It's put together by the Ontario Health Coalition, asking citizens if they want a public or a private hospital.
If, well, the drivers have extra balance, so if they need more, like if they've run out in their trucks, then I will let them know you guys have some extra.
The phone's been non-stop. People are interested. Uh, they want to learn more. Um, they've been very supportive of the campaign. We've had very little people coming in upset about what we're doing.
Well, we're holding a community-wide plebiscite, which is a community-wide vote, like a referendum. Only it's organized by Citizens Group, by the Kingston Health Coalition. Um, about the future of the new hospital in Kingston, whether it's gonna be a public, not-for-profit hospital. Or whether it'll be built as a P-three, privatized P-three hospital. With thirty-year-long contracts with a private for-profit multinational consortium.
Uh, some people wonder how this affects healthcare. They say, well, the healthcare system remains public. Because nurses and doctors will be paid by the government. But the model of the P-three hospital is a, is a step in quite a dangerous direction.
Some of the more conservative members of a council have tried to argue that. Uh, we shouldn't have any role in it as municipal councillors because. It's a provincial issue.
So we're very concerned in the city of Kingston about uh, well, about uh, where are. The, where is the money from our property taxpayers going? And uh, it turns out that it's going to uh, to fund a consortium. That over time will make twelve percent uh, on their invested money. So uh, that twelve percent is. Part of that twelve percent is coming from our property taxpayers.
It's been really positive. It's actually really cool. People are pretty excited, especially when they hear that there's a hundred and eighty other volunteers out there on the ground uh, doing this as well. Uh, it's just such an incredible feeling of solidarity, everybody. Even though they've been out there in the cold for an eight-hour day, they're, they have no problem doing it. They're having fun and having a great time.
It's been very hectic, super hectic. Um, we had three volunteers here for most of the day. And we barely had a chance to have a drink of coffee and we're right here in Tim Hortons. So that just goes to tell you how busy we've been.
All the businesses have just been so warming and welcome to allow us to be able to sit up these polls. It's been a great, great, um, great commitment by the businesses here in Kingston.
It was a huge victory. And you know, you talk to people on the street, everybody knows what's happening. It's now become a public issue. And it wasn't two months ago, nobody even knew we were getting a new hospital. So we've elevated the debate and the public sort of discussion and the democracy around this healthcare policy to a level which is phenomenal. That's the value in a sense of validating that whole discussion, all that work that was done. And then as the next step forward, we're gonna be able to say to the government and the politicians, you know, this community really cares. We want a public healthcare system.
That's it. Okay, you can stop it. Thanks, Sally. So I love watching that. It's so cool. Because it's so doable. And I guess at the end of this, I just wanted to say, in Alberta. Under Ralph Klein, at the same time as the Mike Harris government was here privatizing long-term care and home care and so on. They tried to bring in the private hospitals and clinics in Alberta. They actually imploded the Calgary Hospital. You can see there's a video online. He exploded it, but the way that they do it is to implode the building. And they, and it was the supposed revolution, you know, that they were gonna bring in healthcare. And they tried to bring in um, private clinics. And they, um, and ultimately, I remember when they brought in the legislation for the private clinics. You, you know, citizens filled the galleries. There were people hanging from the railings in the galleries. In protest of this legislation. And people lined up in cars down the highway for as long as you could see. I remember Shirley Douglas telling me, um, uh, or telling us uh, to get into the legislature to protest this. And uh, ultimately, the Friends of Medicare in Alberta, our sister organization in Alberta. Um, got the bills from all the patients, you know, that had paid for their MRIs and CTs in private clinics. And made a major complaint to the federal government and to the Alberta government. And we held protests across the country. And ultimately, the Ralph Klein government was forced to pay back every patient who had been billed. For medically necessary MRI or CT in their province. They were forced to pay them all back. And at the end of it, he said. Um, he called public healthcare the electrified third rail of Canadian politics. He wasn't being complimentary, but I always loved that, because you know the road. Got the two tracks that the, the cars go down. In between, you've got the electrified third rail. That carries the electricity and you dare, you bastards. Let those guys be afraid to take our public Medicare. And so what I'm asking you is, will you work with us? To electrify the third rail uh, and stop them from privatizing our hospitals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Natalie. That was amazing. I love that video on Kingston. Let's do it. Um, there's been questions.
Me too.
Pat, um, Laurie had a question. Um. If the illegal billing is rampant, why has it not been stopped or challenged at least?
Sorry, I missed the first part. Why has what not been stopped or challenged?
The illegal billing.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's a good question, like. Um. In Ontario, when Eric Hoskins was the Health Minister, we actually got some action on it. You know, he was a good man. We actually got some, he tried to bring in enforcement for long-term care as well. He really did buck the industries. I remember at one point, he took me down a hallway away from his staff. And said, did you see what I did? I stopped the private hospitals and I stopped the private clinics. And I was like. Yay. But I mean, why did he need to pull me down a hallway away from his staff and kind of whisper it to me? It's, it's really um, staggering how much the bureaucracy is captured. And how many private interests there are in government. I think very much like long-term care, there's a lot of personnel exchanges between the tops of political parties. As soon as you start to build the industry. Um, you know, you get start, a kind of have a revolving door between the ministry and the industry, between. The top civil service positions and the political positions within particular political parties. Um, and the industry. And then they don't wanna, they don't wanna regulate them. In part, many of them go to join the boards of those organizations or invest in them. You know, while they're in office or after they leave office and, and so on. So um, there is, you know, they don't like. It, in politics, we used to study about governments acting at the behest of large corporations. In these cases, in my experience, they are government. They're the same people, you know, look at. The Ford government and the for-profit long-term care industry. They are the industry, uh, y- in many cases, you know, the tops of the ministries and three former premiers. All on the boards of for-profit long-term care companies as soon as they leave office. You know, it's a, it's very hard. But anyway, the bottom line is that it just hasn't happened. And in every province, there is this kind of revolving door. Between the sort of the governments that are privatizing and the private industry. And once they're in. Even progressive governments don't get them out. And they don't seem to be able to. Control them or overcome the power of their lobby and their connectedness and so on. And someone else asked, wouldn't it be too late? Aren't they gonna pass the law before we have the referendum? And I just wanted to say, well, like, they're gonna pass the law. They have a majority. They'll pass this legislation, but it doesn't mean they get, they can enact it. You know, like, it's gonna take a, a while for them to actually bring in these private clinics and all of this stuff. Um, and so we, you know, the reason why we're, we've chosen the timelines we have is that we do need to move. We need to move pretty fast. We don't have three years till the next election or anything like that. We need to shake them and shake them quickly. But um, but you know, I, I think we need to make sure that people understand when they pass this legislation, we have a loss. They still have to actually implement it and we'll stop them from implementing it.
There's a follow-up question. If illegal, if it's uh, if the billing illegal, is there any opportunity to sue? The government.
The only thing that I know that we could do that would work, I think, in Quebec. There is a citizens group, it's like a seniors organization called the Raiso de something, something. It represents half a million seniors. Um, and they uh, filed a writ of mandamus. Against the federal government. This is interesting, I, because it's a French language group, but in Quebec, for failure to uphold the Canada Health Act. To stop their province that was allowing the private clinics to extra bill patients. Charge what they call in Quebec ancillary fees, so extra billing of patients. Um, and it worked. The federal government put pressure on the Quebec government, the Quebec government for a period in time. While they passed a regulation banning um, extra billing, which I mean, was already illegal anyway, but uh. Except for an MRI clinic, I don't know why that was the exception, because it should have been. But um, then it crept back in again after a few years. So I mean, if we lose, you know, which we're not gonna do. And they bring in private clinics, and we have all kinds of extra billing. Well, of course, we're gonna fight that. And we could do something like a writ of mandamus, but we'll have lost the ownership of the system at that point. And so we don't wanna lose the ownership. Like, the best way to stop this from happening is to keep the services public and not-for-profit. So that's what we wanna try and do first. When Harris tried to bring in the um, cataract surgery clinics. Oh, no, wasn't ca- yeah, what Harris did was, uh, was actually under the Eves government. So Har- Harris was first and then Eves. I don't know if you remember him right afterwards. Um, and they brought in for-profit cancer treatment. Um, in Toronto. And we held massive protests and demanded the disclosure of the deals. The uh, opposition health critics, Lynn McLeod Cloud was the liberal one. Frances Lang was the NDP. They hammered at this in the House non-stop. And they finally got the government to agree to let them see the deal. They couldn't photocopy it or anything. They had to handwrite notes. And what was clear in the deal was that cancer treatment was four hundred dollars per, per chemo session more. At the private for-profit cancer treatment um, uh, place that they had opened. And so they were able to force an audit, special audit by the auditor through the Public Accounts Committee of the Legislature. The auditor found that wait times had actually gone up, not down as a result. And um, obviously, they were spending more money per treatment. They could obvious, for every, you know, thousand dollars, they could buy more treatment in the public. Uh, if they bought it in the public system. And so they ultimately, the hair, the Eves government closed down the for-profit cancer treatment center. Themselves. After a couple of years. And they tried to bring in for-profit MRIs and CTs. And I, they did get in, I think, six of them. Five or six of them. Um, and we stopped all the rest of them.
I think that's.
Helen, you're on mute.
Yeah, I figured that out. All the questions in the chat. Uh, unless Joanne, do you see something that we skipped or anything that needs to be raised? Yeah. Okay, so then, um. Just uh, the next part is, I think uh, Merv, Mervin, you're gonna be on and we have a slide. Uh, that you're going to introduce, right? Mervin is the past chair of the Halton Health Coalition. And he has a quite a lengthy uh, history of community advocacy as well. So Mervin, over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this virtual, uh, public meeting. Natalie has been outlining, uh, why we, we need to be involved in this campaign. And we are, uh, gearing up for a, a, a fight for a cause, which is absolutely fundamental, I think, to the wellbeing of Ontario, indeed, any, any society, uh, for, for that matter. And in order to do that, we want to get as, as larger volunteer base as, as we can. And so we put together this, uh, this slide to illustrate the, the roles that we'd like people to, uh, volunteer to, uh, fill. Uh, we want, we, we have a core group at the moment, uh, about seven, seven people in our core group, but we want to, uh, enlarge that into a, a larger, uh, strategizing, uh, group. And to include in it, um, or the organizations that, um, really have a stake in this issue, uh, which have, uh, a large, uh, membership that they can call upon to, uh, uh, help and to certainly to, uh, vote. And we, we want, uh, people from those kind of organizations. We've been in touch with both the Liberal Party, for example, and the NDP Party, uh, in our area. Also, we've tried to contact the Greens, but they don't have much organization on the ground here. So we'd like to get them involved, uh, in, uh, the committee. We also want to have professional organizations in, involved like, uh, O N A, Retired Teachers Association, uh, community groups, Confederation of, uh, uni- uh, of university, uh, women, TARP and, and so on. And indeed, anyone who, uh, has experience in, um, being involved in campaigning or indeed in, uh, community, uh, development, or really anyone who just has a real passion for this and, and wants to have, uh, an important, uh, uh, role in, in bringing this about. So we're looking for volunteers for this steering committee. As you've heard, we're going to have a, uh, referendum, uh, on, on this issue. And that will require, uh, knowing where we can have, uh, locations, where we can have people who are going to be supervising, uh, the voting, uh, people who are going to be, uh, counting, uh, the votes that are, are cast. So we, we need a, a group of people who are going to assist in carrying out the referendum. Then also, we're going to have a, a sign, uh, campaign. We've got, uh, four municipalities here in Halton. And we want to have coverage in all four of those, uh, municipalities. So we certainly need sign captains for each of those, uh, municipalities. But we also need to have teams. Uh, the sign captain will be the person who will be responsible for receiving the signs, storing the signs, uh, being the contact person for, um, knowing who it is that wants a sign and to be able to inform other, uh, team members about, uh, uh, delivering the signs to those people who want to display them on their, on their lawn. So that is another area for which we want, uh, volunteers. We also, uh, are hoping to be doing some, uh, canvassing, uh, door to door or in public, uh, places. Uh, there's going to be leaflets that, uh, can be used. And we can certainly educate people in the main points that need to be ma- made when they are discussing the issue person, uh, uh, to person. We, we have, uh, in Doreen, a very expert social, uh, media communicator. But, um, Doreen would love to have people who are going to expand, uh, that, uh, uh, the messages that will, will be formulated on, on social media. And to, to continue to kind of multiply, uh, those messages, uh, as, as much and as widely, uh, as possible. If there are people who are, can write letters or, uh, put together op-eds, that also too would, uh, uh, be ve- very helpful. And so if anybody has those skills, we, we'd like them to, uh, let us, uh, know that they're prepared to help in that way. And also anyone who has some other way in which they can bring this to, uh, public attention, uh, that's going to be, uh, memorable. Uh, there's all kinds of people, I'm sure, with creative i- ideas, or ideas that are kind of outside the, the box and so on and so forth. Um, so we'd love to, uh, tap in, uh, to, uh, people's, um, creativity in that way. Now, I'm going to suggest that we have a couple of minutes where we no longer have any talking heads, but people can just concentrate on these volunteer roles and put into the chat, uh, their name, their email contact, and what role it is that they would like to, uh, uh, participate in. And we will collect all that from the chat. We will be having another, uh, meeting of our, our core group in a week's time. We can review that and we can make sure that we can begin to form lists for the, the teams, uh, that we, we, we need. We are going to keep in touch, uh, with people, keep you in touch with how the campaign is, uh, uh, developing. And make sure that, uh, we're, we're using all the, uh, offers that are being made. So let's just have a couple of minutes of quiet and people can put into the chat which volunteer role they're eager to take up.
Thank you, Frank, for volunteering TikTok. Great.
Are you going to get people to get ballot boxes?
Uh, we need, yeah, a call up, right? So the liquor store, right? The, the 12 bottle wine boxes are what we're trying to go for, for the ballot boxes, just like in the video, right, Natalie?
Yeah, just like that. And then some people to cover them and put like the tape around them. Because when you seal them, they'll have, you know, a piece of tape with a signature across the top, et cetera. So, and then they'll need to be numbered and things like that. So if people, like, some people feel like doing that kind of thing, that's a good job, too.
Right. And there's going to be some training for the key people for the referendum managing that as well. I think you're going to offer that, right? So we just need direction from you in terms of what color tape, you know, what, you know, just brown paper for the boxes. I figured we could go to the liquor store and ask them for those boxes. Because I know that sometimes they have so many that they have to break them up and they would be, they would rather, you know, give them to us.
Totally. You can always get them at the LCBO. They won't give you, they might give you five to 10 each time. So it's worth it for kind of everyone to.
To, to start collecting.
Start collecting. That's right.
Yeah.
Because we'll need hundreds per town, for sure.
Yeah. So then we'll have to decide, like, depending on the volunteer base and, um, how many and where to have the ballot boxes and all of that. We'll have to scout out locations. That's going to be exciting.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah. So we need people, like ideas of where we're going to leaflet, where we're going to have, uh, where we can have a vote box. Like, I, I've approached one church to ask them if they could, you, you know, we could use their facilities, things like that, right? So lots, lots of help needed. Yes.
I see that.
There's a, a, a question about, um, um, publicity before the vote. Natalie, can you address that? Great. Yes. So the schedule from here through, um, end of this month, we intend to have, um, the materials ready. And that will be one leaflet that can be used across the province. Like just, you know, have like a normal piece of paper folded in half, graphics on the front, text and information. And, um, the date of the vote, obviously on the front and so on, right? Then, um, each town can take a regular piece of paper and print up all their voting stations on both sides and slice them. So that can be an insert in the leaflet that goes door to door and out in every seniors group and church or faith organization and every possible way that we can get them out, right? As far, far wide as possible. So be one, um, a leaflet, the ballots, um, the kind of, um, the sign out sheets for the ballots and the ballot boxes. Because obviously you can't just give out ballots willy-nilly all over the community. People have to sign them out. Um, and same with the ballot boxes, um, a pledge sheet. So, um, and this will work online or in person. The way that we did it before was, um, say we, uh, say the voting age is 16. Um, uh, because everyone who's 16 right now will be eligible to vote in the next election. It's the age of majority, et cetera, et cetera. Say we were to say that. Then the pledge would be, I'm 16 years old. I'm a permanent resident. Um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm an Ontario resident, a permanent resident in Canada. And, um, I am, uh, only going to vote once. And it would ask for their name, their postal code, which is kind of a unique identifier. Um, and that's, and so they would sign that pledge and then vote. It's not attached, obviously, to the ballot. The ballot is a secret ballot. But, um, that would, that's our, would be our system for ensuring that, um, people only vote once. A kind of how-to video and a booklet for how to like run a referendum in your town. Um, ballots, oh, lawn signs. A letter confirming polling stations, the voting stations, just to help you form your own. A, a dedicated website or webpage. It's not as complicated as ours with a QR code that goes to it. So that would be, the QR code would be on the leaflet, but also on everything else. Um, they're asking money for, for people for help and money and so on. Because obviously this is going to be as big as we can raise the funds to make it. People wanted lawn signs and vehicle signs. So I'm going to see if we can afford to do vehicle signs. Not sure. Um, and then a myth, a couple of Mythbusters, just so people have all of the facts at their fingertips. So those would be all the materials. The main public materials would be the lawn sign, the vehicle sign, if we can afford them, and the, the door to door leaflet. And for you, you would create an insert for that with all of the voting stations for your community. If we can afford it, what we would like to do is, you know, in the, in the Penny Saver or the, the weekly newspaper that goes to everyone's household? I don't know if you have one.
Oh, yes, we have several. We have several.
Okay. So the best one, we would want to put like an insert into it about a week before the vote. Um. And had all the voting stations, like had the date of the vote and, or it really did actually drive a lot of. To, uh, vote. So it obviously, that's a whole host of social media materials. But so, yeah, so a whole bunch of the.
You're broken up again, Natalie.
Now you're frozen.
You're frozen.
Timeline would be. So, um, and, oh, is that better? You're all frozen.
Yeah.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Am I back?
Yeah.
Okay. So the timing would be, um, um, late March, we would hold a big regional meeting. Um, just not to, for any speeches or anything, but just simply to kind of walk through the referendum organizing with everyone in every town. And also if there are little towns around where there are just one or two key contacts, um, who will get a few voting stations in their towns and then kind of link in with the larger towns. We want to facilitate that happening. So that would be late March, early April, in-person meetings to deliver all the materials to everyone. Um, a public launch, so media conferences held by you in every single place across the province, announcing that your town is joining in the referendum, um, et cetera. A few people speaking and explaining why. And then we would launch non-stop sort of media, social media, media, um, reports and analyses and videos. And you know, the whole nine yards for the rest of the time right through as, um, the on-the-ground organizing is happening. So that's sort of really on, in person, on the ground, end of March, like beginning of April to the end of May is sort of the, the, the period of time where like.
Judy has a question. Yeah, just a quick question. Uh, thanks for joining us this evening, Natalie. It's always encouraging to, uh, to hear you speak. You're so passionate about all of this and you've worked on it for so long. So thank you for that. But, uh, all the materials that you mentioned in terms of the leaflet, et cetera, including the insert, that'll all be templated, right? And each, um, local health coalition can customize it, but there will be a template so that there's consistency in the material and so that, uh, we're not recreating in the wheel. Is that correct?
You're frozen, Natalie.
I, I think Natalie's having connection issues, but I can answer that, um.
Go, go ahead, Sally. Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, she'll come back shortly, but I was just going to say, yes, um, things like fact sheets, um, would be province-wide. So there would be no need to adjust those, but like little things like leaflets, for example. Different local coalitions, uh, have the ability to like include local information, local, et cetera. Am I frozen as well?
You're, you're going in and out.
I'm going in and out. Oh, that's, that's frustrating. Okay. Well, long story short, yes, there's going to be materials you can edit, um, to put local information, local contact information, et cetera. Uh, things like fact sheets are more general, uh, so those wouldn't really be edited. But yeah, things like leaflets would be, uh, you'd have the ability to edit. Although I would say with like, if we were to mass order things like lawn signs, those would have to be like one general one, because we'd have to order them en masse. So we wouldn't be able to customize those. So it depends, in short, on what the material is.
No, it's just a matter of templates where we can localize them that would be available on the Ontario Health Coalition website. Similar to the graphics for tonight, you had a whole bunch of graphics and it just had, you know, a banner in the corner that said the local health coalition's name. But we've got the consistent branding across the province where you localize one element that is adjustable. Uh, so people don't have to reformat or have a serious amount of editing skills, but we can, we can customize locally and then print things off locally as needed, et cetera, or post to social media, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, totally. We'll be able to do that. And, um, we'll also be able to provide support, uh, locally when it comes to, for example, well, Natalie's coming back. But, uh, like for leaflets or local posters, uh, if you need assistance with adapting it to keep with the, uh, consistent formatting, we'd be able to assist with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, and Natalie, uh, I don't know if you're back and you can hear us. Uh, she might be taking a second to connect. In the meantime, I'll pass it back over to you, Helen.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for all those volunteers. That is amazing. Awesome. That's great. Thank you so much. I'm excited. I'm so excited. So I hope some of you can, um, attend on March the first, when we have our kickoff session, so that we can do some more planning. I've been told that, uh, Erin has been delayed and she won't, she will not be able to attend tonight. That's correct? Sally, is that? You're on mute.
Yeah. So she was in a previous meeting that's run over schedule and she has another commitment afterwards. So it was a tight schedule for her. So unfortunately she wasn't able to make it.
Okay. I'll try to connect up tomorrow at the protest if she's there. I have my sign already, Judy. You see it?
I do. That's fantastic.
Kind of a crooked going upright kind of thing, but it's like, love, we love our nurses. We love our healthcare workers. Uh, Bill 124, appeal, drop it now. And public hospitals, we love our public hospitals and we love our seniors. So that's what I thought of. That's what I'm bringing. I don't know how long it will last in the snow, snow, but I'm bringing it. So I'll get some of you out that can make it. Um, yeah.
As I said, big boxes of hand warmers. Boxes of hand warmers and their location is going to be out of the wind. So even if the weather is still not cooperative, it shouldn't be too, too bad. And we need to do this for our healthcare. I'm going to put all the details in the chat once again at the bottom.
Thank you. Yeah.
That'd be great. You'll be able to get out tomorrow to support our nurses and our healthcare workers overall.
Yes, and be careful. Do not park in Freshco parking lot, okay? The Shoppers Drug Mart, Freshco parking lot. Be very careful because I used to live in that area and I think they're starting to tow. So just be careful of that. Yeah.
They do, but that is, I don't know if the ONA has made arrangements that as long as they park along the perimeter. But you are right, Helen, there is that risk, but that is the instructions we received in writing.
Maybe you can just put a little thing on your dashboard, say, O N A.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah.
To show that you are there for business.
Yeah.
Community business. Okay, thank you. I see that there. That's great. Lots of info there. Are there any other questions? This is your time for questions. Any more questions from the floor? Anything else that the Health Coalition members, the Hilton Health Coalition members want to say? If there isn't, then well, I got a text. So that's Natalie's back.
So do you want me to?
Raise hand function? Okay, I'm not seeing anything.
Shayam Abadella is asking something, I think.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't raise my hand, but just like I would like to thank all of you for coming today and attending. For Ogilvy, just been very difficult to convince people about our healthcare and stay our healthcare as a public sector. But appreciate all the efforts, specifically Helen. Thanks so much for inviting me today. I've been away for a while. And I would like to introduce myself. My name is Shayam. I am a teacher, ATFO within Ogilvy. And so happy to meet all of you and hopefully I will keep in touch and be a part of the the activity that you are going to provide to help our healthcare stay public. Thanks to all of you.
She's awesome. She took a lot of signs from the the last the last campaign we had and she she did her rounds and she she does heavy lifting. So thank you for coming.
Thanks for inviting.
Thank you for attending. Any other comments, questions?
So do you want me to make the final comments? Hello?
Sure. Your past chair. So yes.
There's no more questions, it seems, from those who've joined us as participants in this meeting, but I I just want to mention a few questions that I think we all need to keep in in mind. And particularly Premier Ford needs to keep in mind and Sylvia Jones needs to keep in mind and all the local MPPs need to keep in mind because those are people who need to feel the heat. Need to feel that, in fact, their seats may be in jeopardy unless they begin to put pressure in caucus to get the present government moving in a different direction. Who will pay for these private facilities to be built? Is this going to be a development on the same lines as we've had with the long term care? Where in actual fact, the government provides most of the the money for the the building of of these facilities and makes them able to be run so that, in fact, there's a huge transfer of money from public taxation into shareholders pockets. Who is actually going to be paying for the building of these facilities? The Financial Accountability Officer's last statement indicated that on on their projections, the Ontario government is going to underallocate up to the extent of $5 billion up to 2025. And it goes on up after that if they they keep their present financing model going. So I mean, this is, this is a huge under investment in our in our public healthcare. And at the same time, if these facilities are going to be paid mainly by the government, where is the cuts going to be made to the other health services which are being provided at at the moment? I'm quite sure that this progressive conservative government isn't prepared to enlarge the revenue they get from taxation. So it has to come from somewhere. And if it comes out of the existing healthcare budget, then there's going to have to be cuts made elsewhere. And and I think we need to also ask, where where exactly is this professional healthcare staff going to come from? I mean, there's no instant way in which these people can pre-provide it. Healthcare professionals take a long term in terms of training for the important work that they do. And particularly if you're talking about surgeons, frankly, I I don't know how many years it takes to train a qualified surgeon, but I wouldn't be surprised if it wasn't somewhere about the region of 10 years. So there's where where are these people going to come from? There's only one place they can come from. And that is the existing public hospitals. I think already we've heard this evening about the the problems of oversight of these new facilities. Who is actually going to provide some oversight to see in actual fact that the services they provide are equal to those which are being provided by our public hospitals at the present time? This, I think, is absolutely crucial because it seems that those provinces which have introduced such private health facilities have had major problems with ensuring that standards have been maintained. And as already been mentioned, the figures of of deaths and serious complications have been significantly higher in those facilities than they are at present in the existing public hospitals. And how how are these facilities? How are these people who are going to run these places going to make a make a profit? Well, we've heard that in fact, they are already involved in extra billing and that and also persuasion measures to try to take, get people to buy expensive additions, which they may or may not need to their their procedures and and so on. But if they have to charge the the Health Ministry fees over and above what it costs at the present time to provide these procedures in our our public health hospitals, then of course, again, we have a expense which we do not have at the present time, which is going to have to be met in one way or another. And if it's going to be met by this, if it's going to be require extra funding from the the budgeting of of healthcare, obviously, again, there will have to be cuts made somewhere somewhere else. So this isn't, this isn't a way of improving the delivery of of healthcare in in our province. In fact, it seems to me it's a way of, in fact, making the provision even worse than it is at the at the present present time. Another aspect I think we need to bear in mind is that Ford has made it very clear that these healthcare facilities don't have to be just run by doctors. They can be run by corporations. And once we have a large number of health facilities run by corporations, we have a new and very significant party who are going to be involved in the development, the future development of healthcare in 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 this province. And they will want it to go in a more privatized direction. So this is indeed a fight for the survival of our our public healthcare system. I I asked myself, I mean, why does the Progressive Conservative Party want to move healthcare in in this direction? What what is the the basic motivation for for making this move when one can see so many problems associated with it from the point of view of providing people with the healthcare that they they want and and they need? And it seems to me it's probably based on 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 two underlying, but deeply underlying and and strongly held convictions. One is that privatized enterprises are always better run than public ones. And that, of course, is by no means necessarily the case, and certainly not in the provision of of public services. The other is, I think, and I I hope I'm not going too far here. But it it seems to me that the underlying ethic here is that the most important achievement that one can have in life is to become wealthy. And if if that is your most important motivation for moving you along in this life, then of course, wealth surpasses health in importance. And I I cannot help but feel that that is a large driver as far as the way in which this direction is is going from this particular government. So please, all of you, if you have signed up for a role, we thank you very much. If you're still hesitating, I just once again emphasize the absolute crucial need to take on some role in this this cause. And is even in these last few minutes to see if there isn't something you feel that you can do to bring about the success that we so much want. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we need all your help, all your talents. This is like a fight of our life and this is really a fight for our lives. And health is wealth, really, and it is equity for all. And these changes are so devastating, especially for racialized groups, rural groups, seniors. So please join us in our fight. I'm excited to work with Natalie. I'm excited to do the referendum. I think we can totally do it. And so thank you so much for spending the time today with us. Have a good night. Bye bye.